Our meeting is called to order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mr. Rowley?
Here.
Mayor Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Shanks? Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Please stand for the indication given tonight by Councilmember Larry Campbell, Jr. And remain standing for the pledge, please.
We all bow our heads, please. Proud, we thank you, Lord, for such a beautiful day that thou hast made. We thank you for allowing us to wake up this morning and to see it and to participate. We thank you for this great city, every citizen. We thank you for the employees of this city. We pray tonight for your wisdom and knowledge as we shall make major decisions that will affect the people of our community. Lord, we pray for your wisdom in dealing with the issues of water within our city. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
We now have the Pledge of Allegiance done by the Boy Scout Troop Number Three Hundred.
Maybe seated, thank you very much, Boy Scout Troop Three Hundred from Mount Vernon Church. Excellent job, very, very proud of you. And thank you for all your sponsors as well. And I see we have a special scout in the room. I couldn't call him a boy scout, but I did call him a man scout. Mr. Bill Smith, will you please stand? And how many years for you serving scouts?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
He looks a lot older.
Okay. Under recognition, I'd like to ask Mr. Jerry Rickney and Ms. Norma Brower to come down, please. I've got a proclamation for Make Danville Shine time coming up. And it reads, "Whereas, City of Danville is proud of its natural resources and its neighborhoods and seeks to protect and improve our community through the action and stewardship of residents, businesses, and government working together. And whereas, City of Danville has taken significant measures to create a more visually appealing community while conveying with residents, leaders, businesses, and civic groups that we all have invested interest in protecting and preserving the beauty and cleanliness of our city. And whereas, the City of Danville for the third consecutive year will lead a campaign to clean and beautify our community and will partner with residents, neighborhood associations, businesses, schools, and civic groups to support Danville beautification and improvement by empowering individuals and groups to take greater responsibility and by mobilizing these individuals and groups to take action. And whereas, the City of Danville parks and other natural resources and its streets, neighborhoods, schools, and commercial district should be beautified, protected, and preserved. And whereas, the goal of beautification of our natural resources and neighborhoods is the legacy we wish to leave for those who will follow us. Now, therefore, I Sherman and Saunders, Mayor, City of Danville, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Make Danville Shine Month and clean up, paint up, and fix up, given under my hand 21st day of April 2015, Sherman and Saunders, Mayor." I'd like to present this, and please feel free to have some remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council. On behalf of staff, I'd like to thank you for your continued support for this initiative. During May 2015, the City of Danville was sponsored a third annual Make Danville Shine campaign, a goal campaign to create more visibility, appealing community by empowering residents to take pride in their individual properties and neighborhoods. Make Danville Shine will once again be kicked off the Make Danville Shine Expo that will take place on May the 2nd, 2015, at the community market, where residents will have the access to a variety of information from almost forty experts in the housing, home repair fields, and the well as the city departments. The police department will also be conducting a drug takeback and shredding that day. In addition to home expo, Public Works will again be picking up oversized piles, up to four tires, and brush, and hope this year can be continued to build on the improvement of the last two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Under communication, those who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda will be heard at this time. If you wish to speak on any agenda item, you will be heard when the item is considered. Anyone wish to speak on any item on the agenda? And I believe we have tonight someone from the youth council or some members of the youth council. If so, you're welcome to come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you all for having us this afternoon. Over the past year, I've been able to work with students from George Washington and Galileo High School, and we have a really exceptional group of students again this year for the project. And we came tonight to introduce you to some of the students as well as invite you to the showcase that'll be coming up next week. But I don't want to take up all the time, I'd rather let them introduce themselves, and they have a little bit to share about the project. But I hope that you all can make it out and hear some of the things. A very proactive group, looking to make some big changes in Danville.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Nikia Stevens. I'm a senior at Galileo Magnet High School.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Jemai King. I am a freshman at Galileo Magnet High School.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Jada King, and I'm a junior at Galileo Magnet High School.
Good afternoon. My name is Reginald Jeffries, and I'm a junior at Galileo Magnet High School.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm also a junior at Galileo Magnet High School, and I am here to personally invite you to our event, which is on Wednesday, June 29th, which is next Wednesday. I would like for all of you to come out because we've worked really hard, and it's a showcase on bringing out what we would like to see in Danville in the near future and how we might can make it happen. We also will have peers and other students groups there that would like to ask you guys personal questions. So we're just here tonight to invite you and the rest of the city out to our event, and we hope to see you.
Before I yield to Mr. Jones, just smiling all over himself, let me thank you all so much for all the work that you're doing, your volunteer time, and thanks for the invitation. Mr. Jones?
Yes, again, I have to say, I am so proud that we have a youth council in our community, and all the work that you all are doing, continue to keep up the good work. And I apologize in advance because I can't be there on Wednesday, 29th, so you all get to ask me all the questions you want to after council meeting tonight. Keep up the good work, and thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler.
Yeah, I too want to thank you, and I know this was a passion of Councilman Jones for quite some time to have this youth council created, and I'm so glad that he continued to push for that and have it come to fruition. I've often said that I don't believe Danville's best days are written in history books. I still believe that they're in front of us, in a large part because of people like you that are creative and passionate about what you're doing. And so it's young people that are going to drive this city forward for the next ten, twenty, thirty years, people like you tonight. And so we're so thankful to have you, and I look forward to next week for your event. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, I'd like to commend our youth. I'm just excited, and also for the vision that Councilman Jones saw in implementing this, and it took a while to get it going, but we're very proud of you. And we just want you all to be special, which I know you are special. And when you get to that point, make sure you come back to Danville to work here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Rowley?
Yes, I know it's hard to believe, but I was young once, too. But your event is going to be at the YMCA?
Yes.
Is that correct? At 4:30?
Yes.
Just want to make sure everybody heard, the YMCA is where it's going to be. Thank you all for what you do, and look forward to seeing you next week.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I want to echo Reverend Campbell. You know, you can go out and see the world and see what's out there, and then when you see what's out there, you realize Danville's pretty darn good place to live, so come on back.
And Mr. Buckner?
And just echoing everybody else, you know, thank you guys for being here tonight, and thank you for all the great work that you're doing. Keep it up, you know? And like they said, once you're ready to sit in these chairs, come on back.
Mr. Gilstrap?
I too like to echo whatever one else has said. I'm extremely proud of our students, not only at Galileo School, but at GW and all the middle schools and elementary schools. In my visitations to the schools, I'm always impressed, especially impressed with our youth council. Thank you, keep up the good work, look forward to seeing you next week.
And I know that Mr. Shanks felt the same way, so you hear from all nine of us, thank you for what you do, very proud of you, and special thanks to Councilman Jones for making certain that this gets done. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak on any item not on the agenda? Mr. King?
I would like to ask Danville Fire Chief David Eagle to come forward. You may have seen in the media coverage that the Danville Fire Department has recently been accredited, and we're one of only six departments in the state of Virginia, and there are 521 departments that have received this accreditation, and one of 200 in the U.S., and there are 30,000 fire departments in the U.S. that have done so. And I know David would like to take just a minute to explain this and what it means as far as recognition of his employees of the fire department.
Thank you, Joe. It's my privilege to announce that we have, as a department, have achieved this accreditation status. You may have read it in the paper, but we wanted to let you know what that means. And this was a three-year process to get this. It's not an award that you put up on a shelf. It's kind of a change in the culture of how we operate to a more strategic, more focused, more measurable way of providing fire service. It took the collective efforts of the entire department, and it involved a comprehensive self-assessment, an evaluation of our performance, an in-depth look at our community and the risk that's in our community. And basically, it compared us against the industry best practice to see how we stack up to the standards, to the regulations, to the best practices in the fire service. It also provides a high level of transparency. It lets you know that we're using our resources wisely, that we're using them prudently. It lets you know that we're following all the safety practices that are put forth. And this was a very involved process that kind of changed the way we operate and changed the way we focus our efforts and how we deploy our resources. And we just wanted to come and let you know what we're doing and what the department's been involved in. And thank you for the support that y'all give us. And we've always known that we were a good department, but now we have concrete data in measurable form to show that we are doing what we say we're doing. And we're very proud of that, and we just wanted to let you know what's been going on in the fire department.
You certainly make our city proud, and we're very thankful for all that the people in your department do every single day. Say a little bit more about being in six, one of six of 521? That's very impressive.
Yes, in Virginia, there are 521 departments. We're one of six municipal fire departments. There's a couple DoD, Department of Defense, military departments, but we're one of six in Virginia municipal departments, and we're one of around 200 departments in the country who have gone through this change in their organization and how they deploy resources and how they manage their fire department.
Well, congratulations. You want to announce, Mr. Vice Mayor?
No, congratulations. This is a great honor for Danville. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
I'd like to ditto that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Rowley?
Thank you.
From what, Chief, from what I've read, I just want to thank the men and women who serve under you. I know this was a very tedious task. You do something for three years, you got to be dedicated to it, and just thank your men and women.
We have a great group of dedicated professionals who work very hard to serve this community. So this stands for all of them. This is not a chief thing or an office thing. This is a collective effort of everyone, and it really took everybody's hard work to make it happen. So we're proud of them.
Again, Mr. Buckner?
Chief Eagle, congratulations to your men and women that have worked so hard for us. Just wanted to echo what Mr. Rowley said, it's a huge win for them. Thank you.
Okay, and please convey our thanks to your staff. Congratulations. Anyone else wish to speak on any item on our agenda?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of staff, my name is Harold Garrison. I live at 4180 Westover Drive. I'm here to heap a little praise tonight. I want everyone to know that Fix It Danville app on your iPhone works. At 11:35 this morning, my wife took a picture of a big pothole on Westover Drive. At 12 o'clock, she had an email saying they were going to check into it. At 2:30, the crew was out there fixing it. So it does work. Public Works is to be applauded for their quick reaction in taking care of that big pothole, and it was huge. Secondly, Councilman Rowley, I know you voted against it, but last two weeks ago, the person that I considered to be the spokesman for the retirees for the City of Danville was back here once again, less than six months, after the last bonus payment, asking you to put aside funds for another bonus payment. The people that are retiring from the city have to understand that when they sign their retirement papers, they are signing for that amount, and that is all they are entitled to. And, Councilman Vogler, I hope that you keep your word and never vote for another one again. The third thing is, next month, you're going to pass a budget for the City of Danville. And we are so used to having big numbers thrown at us that we don't pay attention to those big numbers anymore. That budget is for $262 million and change. That is $6,000 plus for each citizen of the City of Danville to govern us. I don't need $6,000 worth of governing. My wife lives in the same house with me, she doesn't need $6,000 worth of governing. And this is on top of the fact that we pay for our utilities, we pay for our wastewater treatment, we pay for our garbage pickup. That's an awful lot of money, and I want to put it in perspective so that you'll remember it, that what you're voting for is to spend $6,000 per person. And I don't know of many people in the City of Danville that need $6,000 worth of local government. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Good evening.
Well, tonight, my name is Beverly Richardson, and I have worked with Housing and Redevelopment, Mr. Reynolds, Norma, Mr. Rickney, everybody there to rehab Grove Street. And so tonight I come to praise them. And so often people criticize people and say, what is Danville doing? The blight program works. I am living proof that the neighborhood can live again. And I agree with you, Mr. Vogler, when you said our best days are ahead of us. Grove Street's best days are ahead of it. Jefferson Street, Jefferson Avenue, Five Forks, their best days are ahead of them. We have some issues that we have to overcome, and they've heard enough from me about the issues of bringing their apartment buildings up to code and getting the right kind of tenants in there that do not unnecessarily expend the center's resources when it comes to police, fire, and rescue. Now, some may say, why am I bringing it up? I lived the experience. I've owned a house on Grove Street for six years. There is nothing anyone can tell me about a neighborhood being revitalized unless you've lived that experience. Grove Street has recovered a lot, and I thank Mr. Reynolds. I can't thank him and praise him enough. I thank Mr. Rickney, I can't thank and praise him enough. The inspectors. I am just asking you, don't underestimate what the blight program in Danville has done. It has been fantastic. And I want to say this, the views in my backyard you used to couldn't see, they are outstanding. Down in that valley, on that whole block, they are outstanding. Now, people always complain and always, they always say, what's wrong in Danville? But whenever I've called the City of Danville, whether it's Police Department, Captain Merrick's, Dean Hurston, whoever it's been, I've even called Mr. King a couple of times, I am pleased. Yes, we've made progress in this city. I am pleased, because so often people, there's a lot of apathy and fear in this community where people won't speak out. But since I've returned, I have decided to stand up and to do what's right and let people know that Danville can be one of the greatest, smallest cities in this country with some vision, and if we keep doing the right things, that will make people proud to come to Danville, whether they are visiting or not. One thing I do want Danville to do is look at tourism. We have to increase tourism. We've got to make Danville a destination where people want to come to not just hear about history, but what we're doing. Downtown Danville is going in the right direction. However, downtown Danville, I don't know what it's going to take a survey to find that group of people that are willing to spend Starbucks money in downtown, maybe even McDonald's money. We need people that are young and young at heart that want to come into the city, because I get exhausted going out on Riverside Drive for everything you need. I think something's wrong with that kind of mentality. The River District is not the only thing that needs to be developed. I think, from living there, Grove Street has beautiful houses that need to be rehabbed. Jefferson Street has beautiful Victorians that need to be rehabbed. Five Forks has beautiful houses that need to be rehabbed. But I will be honest, some of those apartments have to come down for people to feel like they have an investment in the community. People who are tenants, who are in apartments, they don't invest nothing in the community. The constant trash pickup, the constant grass cutting. But I want to say, the blight program is important. People would never come to City Council and tell you this because of the fear of speaking out, or maybe they think you won't be heard. But I hope you hear me tonight. Housing and redevelopment is doing a wonderful job in this city, and you can ride around and see the difference in the blight program. And I will say this, if you're spending the money for the right thing on the budget and the city improves and Danville is that shining city up on the hill, then Danville will grow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Vogler?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for your words. There were so many high points that you had in it, I was going to mention them specifically, but then you had so many by the end, I'll just say thank you for the whole thing.
Thank you.
And in regards to the issue of blight, and thank you for your words on that, and it is an important issue. And I did just want to mention, last week, Mr. Reynolds and Councilman Buckner and myself were in Richmond at a Virginia Housing Commission meeting to talk about blight and to talk about what we've done here, what we can do, and a program that I've been interested in for quite some time is land banking, and how that can help, and we need some help at the state legislature to get that through. And it was a very positive meeting last week, and I think that there could be some good things moving in that direction that will continue to help Danville in our blight efforts and to rehab some of these neighborhoods and to have a full, comprehensive approach. But I want to thank you for coming and standing and speaking up, and I know these guys will tell you, it wasn't that long ago that I was standing there at the podium. So I always appreciate it when people come and speak.
Well, there's so many people that are afraid to, people will criticize, but they will not praise. And it's people's natural instinct in Danville, I noticed, to go to the negative because of Danville's history. But you said Danville's future is much brighter than its past, and if we can get people to buy into that with government and to be responsible and not apathetic, that is a battle, I think, in Danville, the untenable war that we wage in people's hearts and minds is that will things get better. And we've got a public relations job that needs to be done, I will say, between government and the private citizen, to make people more responsible in their communities. And I think if we can widen that gap, Danville can be just like anywhere else. I do believe in Danville. I would not have stayed here. But the Housing and Redevelopment gave me hope that things were going to get better, and I come to praise them tonight. I didn't come to cast out on anybody, and I thank the police department, because I don't know where I would have been if it had not been for them answering the calls. And I know there are a lot of people who would not stand before you and say that, but they do appreciate the police department.
Mr. Jones?
I have to ditto what Councilman Vogler said. In 2016, there'll be four seats coming up on the school board and five coming on City Council. And a lot of times, our families, whether it's school board, elected official, or City Council, our families also go through what we go through. They hear all the negative because, as you stated, there's so many things that people can find that need to be done. There's so many things in our city that is being done. You are absolutely correct. I say it often, and I'm going to continue to say it, people can reach us on our website, talk to us, there is no fear in coming down here, but your ideas are very important, and I appreciate you. It means so much, especially to see, and I say this often, to see young adults come to our council meeting and have the heart. We need to see more of it. They'll get on the telephone, and they'll call other people and other stations.
Absolutely.
But we really need people like you, and please continue to come forward, because you're absolutely right. I travel Grove Street every single day.
Yeah, and it's beautiful up there now. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rowley?
Ms. Richardson, you are a breath of fresh air.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I've always been like this.
We all, you know, everybody has problems. We all have problems, but it sure is nice to dwell on some happy things, and I appreciate you.
I thank you, because I don't know where I would have been with that blight program. The police department, I was wearing the police department out. It was that bad. And people say, you know, people always want to muzzle people, but I believe in transparency too. I think government can be good, and it can work for the good of people. I don't think that government should be awful people, but I think it was important for me to come here tonight, because I get it all the time, they have, I heard you this, I heard you that, and you can't get these people out, but everybody's glad these rundown houses are going to be in tune, and they are happy.
Yes, ma'am.
You've always been civic-minded, and you've always taken a lot of pride in your city, and you've always praised, and you've always had suggestions for things that need improvement.
Thank you.
So we really appreciate very much your coming down and verifying what we've always believed, that blight eradication is necessary.
Yes.
It is making a difference, and Danville is becoming much more improved.
Yes, it is.
And thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm the Vice Mayor.
Yeah, again, to ditto what everybody else said, you know, we always, it's always caused us great anguish when we debate these programs, should we get into blight? Should we get into redeveloping the downtown? Some people tell us the government has no business doing that. But the fact of the matter is, if government doesn't start the ball rolling, it doesn't get done. And it's just wonderful we hear that we're seeing some fruits of our blight development program. And, you know, as the government can start it and get it rolling and start downtown development, then private industry chimes in.
Exactly.
But they usually don't start it themselves, so we really appreciate what you're saying.
I appreciate it, because Danville has so much to offer, and there's so much history. And we have to get people to care not only about the City of Danville, but we've got to get people to have better family relationships in Danville, to build this city back up for leadership, and that's another whole issue in itself. And I'm just hoping that the City Council will not be afraid to address some of these issues about neighborhood... issues about neighborhood and family and reconnecting, because America's a great nation, and there is nowhere else that you can go in this world and have the freedoms that you have in this country. Thank you.
Thank you again. Anyone else? Ah, yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Patricia Dudley, and I'm here because I'm concerned about the safety of the citizens of Danville. I'm just going to read a little insert of what I wrote to some of the city councilmen. On September 16th of last year, at the Harris Financial Building, there was an incident, and a police and the rescue squad was called to the scene. My concern is that the Harris Financial Building is a city faculty where thousands of people come to pay their taxes, their light bills, and make other financial transactions. Employees enter and leave at all times of the day. The faculty should at least have cameras on the outside of the building. Many people are carrying large sums of money, as I was on that day. I understand that the police officers are on site during certain times of the month. However, this is not enough. Security cameras are needed very badly. This may be one of the few incidents that has been documented, but I feel certain that other episodes have occurred. Perhaps the police have been involved with some of those incidents. I am respectfully requesting the city to install security cameras, because as of today, myself and I have four other citizens that have had concerns at this building. And I know the budget is coming up, so I would very encourage the city to try to do something about putting cameras on the outside.
Thank you so much. And I can tell you, while the budget has not been voted on, that is being discussed.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm feeling pretty positive about that. We just need to vote on the budget. But that issue has come up, and the concerns have been expressed, not only by citizens, but also by council members as well. So it is being addressed.
Okay.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Thank you.
Put your hand up.
I was going to say what you said.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to thank you for coming down for your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's for all the safety of the citizens of Danville.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to speak on any item not on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bryce Simmons. I am an environmental engineer with the state of Virginia. I work for the Office of Drinking Water here in town, and I want to speak to you tonight as a resident of the city. The water problem, obviously, has been going on for a while, and I want to try and clear up some misconceptions that, you know, I personally believe. I look at this situation as a natural disaster. This is no way in... It doesn't go with the coal ash spill. It has no... The coal ash spill has had no effect on this algae bloom that has happened in the Smith River. We do know that it is an algae bloom in the Smith River, and it is... The smell and the taste is created by a compound called geosmin. And geosmin is a compound that's released when the algae actually dies. And to put into perspective of what the human... The tolerance at which humans can detect geosmin, it is at four parts per trillion for some people. Now, to put that in perspective, that's one drop of water in 400-size Olympic swimming pools. So the detection rate is very, very minute. So when you smell this and taste it, the city is doing the best that they can to try and fix the problem. They're actually using the best engineering practice to eliminate this geosmin that's in the water. However, my belief is, you can't throw enough money at this problem to make it go away. You just have to let it run its course. And my hope is that these heavy rains that we've had here lately are going to flush that algae bloom downstream. And I've definitely noticed a difference in my water. I don't know about you all, but it definitely has tasted better over the past couple of weeks, or past week at least. So I just wanted to, just wanted to come up here and, you know, make that known. I think the city has done the best job that it can to fix this taste and odor problem. It's just, like I said, I don't think that there's enough money that you can throw at it to make it go away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on any item not on the agenda? Okay, under... Under a minute, is there a motion to approve our March 17, 2015 meeting?
Motion.
And Mr. Campbell, just a second. And Mr. Buckner, discussing the motion. Please, call the roll.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
...adopting an ordinance amending the year 2020 land use plan from urban, single-family to community service and to resume from OTR, Old Town Residential, to highway retail commercial. Before I continue, I do have a letter, and the request has been made to remand this back to the Planning Commission, so we don't need a public hearing, but we will need a motion from council if you agree to send this back to the Planning Commission to remand this item back to... Mr. Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Just a second. Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Okay, discussing the motion. Please, call the roll.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
...adopting an ordinance amending the year 2020 land use plan from urban, single-family to community service and to resume from OTR, Old Town Residential, to highway retail commercial. Before I continue, I do have a letter, and the request has been made to remand this back to the Planning Commission, so we don't need a public hearing, but we will need a motion from council if you agree to send this back to the Planning Commission to remand this item back to... Mr. Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Just a second. Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Okay, discussing the motion. Please, call the roll.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
...adopting an ordinance amending the year 2020 land use plan from urban, single-family to community service and to resume from OTR, Old Town Residential, to highway retail commercial. Before I continue, I do have a letter, and the request has been made to remand this back to the Planning Commission, so we don't need a public hearing, but we will need a motion from council if you agree to send this back to the Planning Commission to remand this item back to... Mr. Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Just a second. Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Okay, discussing the motion. Please, call the roll.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
...adopting an ordinance amending the year 2020 land use plan from urban, single-family to community service and to resume from OTR, Old Town Residential, to highway retail commercial. Before I continue, I do have a letter, and the request has been made to remand this back to the Planning Commission, so we don't need a public hearing, but we will need a motion from council if you agree to send this back to the Planning Commission to remand this item back to... Mr. Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Just a second. Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Okay, discussing the motion. Please, call the roll.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
...approving a resolution for FY 2016 Danville Public School Budget. I open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Mr. Chairman, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Saunders, members of council. For the benefit of your audience, I am Ed Paul Hamus. I am the chairman of the school board for Danville Public Schools. I would like to begin this evening by thanking all the members of council who were able to attend our joint meeting just one week ago, and to then let you know that a lot has happened in the past week, so I want to get you up to speed on where we are, thanks to your wonderful, positive interaction with the members of the school board just a week ago, and individually, off and on throughout the time intervening. First of all, I can tell you that we approved our draft three budget last Thursday evening, and I have with me the overview sheet on draft three. I believe that that has probably been provided to you as well, so I'll make this very quick. The primary thing that was added since draft two was the reinclusion, if you will, of five teaching positions at George Washington High School. These were replacements from the ten that were eliminated from George Washington just a year ago. The experience of the school, this school year, was that we were forced to ask teachers to take on an extra class period during what would normally be planning time, which they willingly did, but which they're not particularly excited about doing on a routine basis. We also found it difficult to offer a sufficient number of courses to keep students on track for graduation if they hit a bump along the way. So the five positions are in mathematics, science, family and consumer science, art, and the Odyssey Lab. Similarly, at Galileo Magnet High School, the addition of one additional math teaching position. Also, two part-time receptionists at the middle schools are being proposed to go to full-time status. And over at the Johnson Elementary, Northside Preschool Campus, the addition of a second medical professional, a licensed practical nurse, because of the numbers of very fragile health-conditioned children that we are serving in that area. In order to cover those additional costs of new initiatives in draft three, the administration found in working with every principal at every school that there were a couple of positions that could be eliminated without impacting the offerings to students. One teaching position at the grade six level in the middle schools, and one middle school orchestra position. That does not mean we're going to do away with orchestra at either middle school. It simply means we're going to adjust schedules to allow one orchestra teacher to cover both schools, and that can certainly be done very easily. To, in addition to covering the cost through the reduction of those two teaching positions, we also are able to cut out the additional class supplements to those teachers who took on extra courses, both at George Washington and Galileo. And then finally, to finish plugging the gap, we dipped a bit deeper, somewhat deeper than many members of the board were really excited about doing, but we did end up looking at the 2012-13 state carryover in the amount of 605,000 to bring this budget back into alignment as a balanced budget. So that is our third and final draft. It was approved by the school board last Thursday. In addition, last Thursday, we discussed very briefly and readily took action to modify our capital improvement request to council for the upcoming budget. And the specific modification that we have agreed to is to replace the metal shingles, the, excuse me, the metal roofing materials with shingle roofing, with the understanding, as many of you indicated during our joint meeting a week ago, that we could then use the resulting savings for other capital improvement projects that are on our long-term list. So that is a change that we were very, very happy to be able to make just last Thursday. I do have with me this evening two other members of school board. We have Ms. Sharon Domes and Mr. Stephen Gould. Don't know if you have time for any questions, but...
Yes, I do, and welcome to Ms. Domes and to Mr. Gould as well, to the meeting tonight. Dr. Paul Hamus, the LPN position at Johnson and Northside, is this a new position?
That would be a new position.
Is that a full-time or part-time position?
That is part-time during the hours that the students are actually there.
When I saw 28,000 for a nurse, I thought that was low, that was full-time. That's part-time.
No, it's definitely part-time, and I believe it is no benefits because of the limited number of hours.
So it's a contracted position? Just curious. Is it a contracted position?
We will, we will try to hire it ourselves. It will be, well, we don't call that a contract, but in effect, it is. Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Jones, Mr. Rowley, Mr. Vogler, Mr. Campbell, and Mr. Vice Mayor.
Dr. Paul Hamus, thank you so much for hosting us. Ms. Domes and Stephen, Mr. Gould, thank you all so much as well. I've gotten several calls in the last two days, and, Dr. Paul Hamus, maybe you can help me. The first call I got was, if this budget is passed, will you be advertising the job for the athletic coordinator as you do with all other jobs in DPS?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
Concerns are in the community, which that position has always been given to someone before the budget's even voted on. I'm sure you've heard it as well. The second concern I had was, as long as you and I have been on the school board and been in these elected positions, it brought some concern to the citizens in the community where three of your board members voted against the budget that you're presenting to us tonight. Is there anything that council can do or need to know, reasoning, or anything that we as a council can do before we go into the first reading?
As I indicated during my brief overview, the real sticking point for the one individual who spoke up with an explanation was what he would consider overuse of the last little pot of carryover state money from back in 2012-13. I understand that concern, and it could be interpreted as saying that this level of funding is not sustainable into the future, but I believe that there are some actions that the board is looking at in the very near future that will provide the opportunity to keep this going at this level of staffing. And I also believe very strongly that finishing off our payment to council, the four-year payoff plan, which will be completed not in this budget but in the subsequent budget, once we get past that one, there will be a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel as well. Perhaps my colleagues would like to speak more to the issue of why there were negative votes.
The, and while they're contemplating, I don't think they're going to come up here, but any truth to, are we cutting instructions? And the reason I'm asking these questions, Dr. Paul Hamus, is you've heard Ms. Richardson and so many other citizens speak tonight. It is very important, as you know and I know, that we have a collaboration and a great working relationship with our city and our Danville Public Schools. And when that vote took place last week, my phone's been ringing off the hook about the partnership. Didn't you all, prime example is, didn't you all just have a retreat, and now it's three school board members voting against the budget? And I just wanted to make sure that the people heard from you as the chairman that we are continuing to move Danville forward and our Danville Public Schools forward. I think assuming that another 525,000 is going to be put back in is not a good assumption. I think you need to look at how you can do it without that, and then we'll see, because we don't know where we are as a city. You know, we are putting in 18-point, whatever million, plus another 2-point, whatever we're going to do once we get all of this done. And we only have so, so much of a savings account ourselves. So hopefully that will be an assumption that you'll look at, that you think that's what's going to make up this 605,000 difference.
Understood.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Bogler.
Yeah, debate is good, and spirited discussions are good, and, you know, dissenting votes are not necessarily a bad thing, although I was a little surprised to see it considering those views hadn't been expressed two days earlier in our meeting. But I too do have some concerns about using that one-time kind of nest egg to balance the budget, and as Councilman Rowley mentioned, to assume that additional money's going to be there. I guess, when I ask you, do you anticipate the school board asking city council for additional money next year that has not been appropriated these past few years?
Our presumption at this point would be that next year, one year from now, being the fourth year of the payback, that we would ask for exactly the same kind of arrangement that we have this year.
To maintain the level of funding that we've had this year? And you do feel confident then you will find a way to offset this amount of money that was put in from that one-time leftover amount of funds? You'll be able to find that amount of money through efficiencies or?
Yes, sir.
Because that's a, that's a pretty big chunk of money. And so I think, you know, there is some rightful concern about doing that, although I had hoped we'd have heard it two days earlier instead of reading it later on. But I do want to thank you for being here tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and I most definitely enjoyed the fellowship between council and school board. I have a couple of issues I want to talk to you about. I want to pick it back off of Alonzo Jones. I think it's very important that we do consider some type of way for teachers to have an increase, and they haven't had one in a number of years. And that is, that's ultra-serious, especially with what's going on within our school system. Talking about the $500,000 afterward, we have two concerns. We'd like to have teacher increase pay, but also we have to deal with the capital improvements, because we've got $60 million, if I'm not mistaken, of things that need to be done in the future. Now, council, and I was glad to see that we appropriated $2.6 million extra for capital improvements, and you really need it. So I, it would, it would be some serious discussions, how we can deal with the teachers, yet we know we have to deal with the capital improvements.
Right.
You know, and I think that we should hop on that and have a plan, put something in, that we all can be on the same page. Secondly, since council has been so lenient towards some of the capital improvements, I would like to see that the school board would consider some way in moving the storage out of the old Glenmore building downtown, that we can make that a retail business or something that the economic development team can work together with you all, that we can come up some way, and if it's all right with Mr. King. But I think for downtown, that having it as a storage, that's not the right place. We have other areas you could do that, and we should do something to make that into a retail. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to comment on something else, but I agree with what he just said. That is a prime location for downtown development, that corner. And for years, I've envisioned that being some kind of store or, you know, something for people to go to. It's just right across from the fountain.
Yes.
And that really needs to be part of downtown development, not a storage area. Comment. I do respect the school system. I remember when we first appropriated the $2.5 million. The school board promised that you would not come back asking for more money, that you would keep your requests at the same level, because if you had, then, you know, we've loaned you $565,000 a year, and then you come asking for more, they're criticizing you, well, you'll just come back next year and ask for more money and make up the difference. You have not done that. You've kept it level, so I certainly respect you for doing that. And, you know, then the final comment is, teachers are so important, we must keep our teacher salaries competitive, we must draw the best teachers, and then we have to have good schools. If we have crumbling schools, gutters falling off, roofs leaking, it doesn't take long for parents to hear that. And guess what? They're going to take their children elsewhere. They're going to take them to the county or another school system, because they can say, our school is terrible. It's crumbling. So we have to improve our schools and our physical plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gisra.
I want to echo what Dr. Miller said, is that the condition of our schools is extremely important, not only for student retention or increasing the students, but for our student safety, that's important. So I think it's a wise investment that we keep our schools at the top level. But that was what I go to comment on. I'm going to refer this to our attorney. I was a bit taken back when the budget was approved four to three. And I thought that, I know for city council anyway, anything over $10,000, we have had two-thirds vote. Does that not apply to the school board?
It doesn't. Those are our, those are our own city code rules. So as long as they have a majority of their members voting in favor, then it's okay.
Well, anyway, the four-three vote was a little concerning, but I was glad that we had that input from all the school board members, and I think it's important that the opinions of all are heard. And it would have put us in a difficult position if it were four-three the other way. I don't know what we would have done, in my opinion. But anyway, I also like to commend you for, for three years anyway, keeping the funding level from the city the same, and honoring your promise of not to ask for an increase from appropriation. So thank you. And thank you for the input from the school board members.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. And before I, before I yield to two other council members, and I think I saw Mr. Shanks come in. Come on up, sir. Before I yield, tonight is the first reading on the budget. And I guess the question to you and/or to our attorney, and we're looking at the numbers you just gave us for the first reading. And as far as your four-three vote, it just tells me that you have, like you said, a school board taking a lot of emphasis on what they're doing, and they feel very strongly about it, and I think that's, that can be healthy, can be healthy. The question is, I guess, if these numbers change between now and the final reading, and we have had the required first reading, will that have any negative impact, or any impact at all, on the final reading?
No, sir. And that's, that's the purpose of the public hearing, is because there are times that the budgetary numbers change based on the public hearings, and it's not a problem at all.
So if the numbers go up, the 59 million and change, if that goes up or down, it has no impact?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Buckner.
I'd just like to follow up on what Councilman Campbell said. You guys really know how I feel about you being in that building, and especially to take up the Glenmore as well. To me, it just seems extremely wasteful, and it's not something that we should be doing. And also, we really do need to focus on teacher retention, student retention, because if the, the teachers aren't there and the students aren't there, then we have nothing. So I do appreciate you guys hosting us the other night. It was very informative, and I really look forward to working with you guys more in the future. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bogler.
Yeah, I apologize. I do just have one last question. Councilman Jones had mentioned the issue of teacher raises, and for the benefit of those in the audience or those watching on TV that may not be aware or interested in knowing, the General Assembly approved a 2% teacher raise with a local match for one...
One and a half.
One and a half, excuse me. So is there going to be a raise for the teachers?
Absolutely. The one and a half percent that the General Assembly approved was their portion of one and a half percent for the SOQ, Standards of Quality, positions in our schools. What we have proposed ever since the second draft, maybe even back in the first one, was one and a half percent for every one of our employees, plus some additional money for those teachers in years zero through three on the teacher scale, precisely dealing with the issue about retention. Because we found in a study of regional school pay scales, that we were slipping below a lot of our natural competitors early in a teacher's career, but that we catch up as the years go by. It's hard to get that young teacher to wait for things to catch up. So we had been having a fair amount of turnover in years two, three, and four. With this change, we trust that we'll be able to turn the tide on that and become, once again, the school division of choice for great teachers in Southside, Virginia.
Well, I thank you for the information. That is, I know an issue that we get asked about a lot, and I'm sure you all do, so I wanted to give you the opportunity to speak tonight with the TV and folks here, so see all that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, a follow-up question. Do we presume that when we do the final budget, you will have the capital improvement projects that you want to bring forth from, you know, the savings from the metal roofs? Will you have those projects for us to vote on?
I doubt that we would have it by then, because our bid process normally is a 30-day bid process, and I believe your final approval is early May.
Yeah. Well, you know how much you're going to save. You said you didn't know how much you could save on the metal roofs. Well, you know by then and have an idea of it.
We might have a reasonable estimate, but until bids come in, I'd be hesitant for us to identify specific projects.
It makes us a little hesitant to vote on projects we don't know what they're going to be, though. I mean, at least give us an idea of what projects you might move forth.
All right. I will challenge our administration to get a decent estimate on how much saving might be involved, and give us a list of several projects slightly above and slightly below that estimate, and we'll put the whole tally out to council as a list of possible projects, depending on how the final bids come in.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
We'll be glad to do that. Or the staff will.
Mr. Jones.
Dr. Paul Heim, just for clarity, so those who are watching and listening can understand this, the SOQ from the General Assembly, what is the number of SOQ persons in our system that would have gotten that increase from the General Assembly?
I'm hesitant to put a number on it, because I don't know that number. Councilman Jones, ballpark figure, it's roughly 65% of our employees are SOQ employees.
So 65% of our employees would have gotten an increase from the General Assembly from the state? And I guess the question that people are asking is, if the General Assembly, and I know this is an if question, if the General Assembly would not have given this 65% to the SOQ, what would Danville Public Schools would have done? Because this is what, I think this is what is confusing people. What's confusing people is, the SOQ, the General Assembly says, okay, we're going to give 1.5%. And I think people are confused, because when you talk about the match, they're thinking Danville Public Schools is also going to match that 1.5%, which is a 3% increase. Well, it sounds like that Danville Public Schools, you see, it sounds like Danville Public Schools is really not doing anything for 65% of its people, because 1.5% is coming from the General Assembly for 65 people who qualify for SOQ, which means the only thing Danville Public Schools is doing is matching those other who don't fit into that 65%.
That's closer. That's closer to being accurate. Let me clarify that Danville Public Schools is picking up 24% or 26% of even the SOQ part, and for the non-SOQ, we're picking up 100%. And of course, when we say Danville Public Schools is picking that up, if it's not coming from the state, you are the nine individuals who are making that possible. What would we have done if the General Assembly had not passed anything for SOQ positions? We would have had to take the same amount of local money, spread it out over all of our employees, and it might have been 0.4%.
Roundabout, how much money is council giving you all for pay increases? And if you don't have that number now?
I don't have that number. It's within what you have been providing for the past several years.
So in what council's providing you, you're able to provide the remaining funding of the SOQ, plus the zero, the three-year retention for the teachers?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks largely to excellent budget management by our staff and some careful planning by everyone involved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Whitfield, I know the state law says council must approve all school budgets throughout the entire state, resulting in a 59 million, 149,090 tonight. I guess my question is, and we must approve it 30 days before the fiscal year-end, I understand. My question is, if we approve this number, is that the cap? If the school board was to receive some other fund, state, federal grant, foundation, et cetera, does that require additional approval to add to this figure?
No, sir.
It does not?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Shanks.
Good evening, Dr. Paul Heim.
Good evening.
I just wanted to, you know, we've had several very good meetings lately with joint meetings between city council and the school board. One of the topics that always comes up has been salaries, and you've spent a lot of time addressing the salaries tonight. The thing that has continued to concern me is the fact that the veteran teachers or teachers above the first three or four levels, step levels, are not seeing any change in their steps. And, and also, this is a good opportunity here to take advantage of some state money, matching money, and getting small raises for the overall student, teacher population. At, I want to make sure I understood, at the last meeting, with all the school closings and all the things that you all have been doing, like, for instance, this year, cutting costs by about $800,000, all those things that have taken place over the last two or three years, still does not allow for our constant, or our typical contribution to the school board, still does not allow for salary adjustments, which would include step raises for veteran teachers, and then raises for the whole gamut above and beyond 1.5% or so. Is that true? And is it true that we would have to, from what you're seeing right now, that city council would have to pay, contribute more to the Danville Public Schools to accomplish that goal?
I believe that to be an accurate statement. There could be some individuals that believe that there are still pockets of overspending in certain areas, but I do believe we're down to just, you know, rubbing the nickels together to make things happen. So I believe I would agree.
Let me follow up on Mr. Shanks' question. I apologize for interrupting.
Certainly.
You, I heard you say that you think so, that the city may have to put additional funds that they're requiring. I guess my question is, if the city is putting in two times, well, more than the state is requiring, so if the state said we must put in 9 million, and we're putting in 18 million, if the state had additional mandates, then the additional 9 million the city is putting in, wouldn't that be the additional funds? As opposed to adding to the 18 million that's already going through the school system? Some of Mr. Shanks' questions.
The additional funding that council has provided for so many years has allowed Danville Public Schools to do things above and beyond the standards of quality established by the General Assembly. For instance, I believe I mentioned at our joint meeting last week, that under the standards of quality, Danville Public Schools have sufficient enrollment to allow for one assistant principal. And that doesn't mean one at each school. That means one grand total that we could assign anywhere we choose. Clearly, if you know about the kinds of activities we have at George Washington High School, they need more than one assistant principal. Some of our larger elementary schools, simply because of the numbers of students involved, need more than one administrator to monitor the instruction in classrooms, to keep things running smoothly at the front office, to make sure that all the food is delivered for the cafeteria, just 1,000 things every day. And yet, the state, in its wisdom, claims we only need one assistant principal in the whole school division. So while the extra money is indeed extra, I would say that anything that cuts into what we're currently doing with that additional funding would be detrimental to the students of the city of Danville.
Detrimental, but not a requirement that the city put additional funds.
Correct.
Thank you. Sergeant Shanks.
I just, I wanted just to go back so that the point isn't lost, in that with all these cost savings, we're not able to give raises throughout the system. And for instance, the, most of the staff got raises a couple of years back, but most of that went to retirement, required. The raise didn't come even close to their paycheck, it went straight to the retirement contribution. And then, then there's this raise here, but it's been about six years that things have been pretty dire for your budget. And, and I want to just leave two thoughts here. It sounded to me like that any further pay increases for the school staff would have to be additional funding from city council in future budgets. That's what I heard. And the other point is, well, I lost the other point, but that was the main point I wanted to make, because I don't think we, as council, have gotten a... point I wanted to make, because I, I don't think we, as council, have gotten a full grasp on what was said at the last meeting. And I know when I originally was running for city council eight, six, uh, six or eight years ago, the, uh, the public was not overly, uh, excited about increasing funding to public education or DPS. You've made plenty of cuts and done all kinds of things to downsize, but we still don't have the money to, to proper, in my opinion, properly compensate the public school, uh, teachers and staff. So I wanted to make sure that we understood that that was the situation. And then if you recall, my last point, we did ask, or I did ask, for some more information with regard to, uh, the relationship of the administrative budget for Danville Public Schools to the instructional budget and how that, how that compares with other localities in our area, along with, the second request was, along with some more understanding what the other localities or similar localities were paying their staff for instructional salaries. So I just wanna make sure, we did talk about this at the, at the joint meeting, I just wanna make sure we were all on the same page.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I don't know if the staff have made any progress on discovering those numbers.
I wouldn't. I certainly wasn't rushing those numbers. That's just, I think we need, we need to understand those numbers as we go forward.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Rowley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On the two, uh, reductions in what is before us tonight, the two middle school teaching positions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, sixth, grade six and orchestra, are those positions filled now?
Uh, as far as I know, they are both filled now, but the principals have gone through grade by grade and figured out exactly how many students to anticipate in each grade for next year. And there is one less teacher needed at that level. Now, when you consider both of those schools, the total number of sixth grade teachers, probably a dozen or more, chances are, one of them will be leaving, and so I don't know that this will cost anyone a job.
Right. But to your knowledge, they are filled. That was one I wanted, they're not open positions, they, somebody's in them right now.
Correct. Right now, they are.
Thank you.
Other question for Dr. Bohamis? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your cooperation and ongoing dialogue.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we are still in public hearing. So anyone else wish to speak on this matter regarding the Danville school budget for the first reading? Anyone else? Close the public hearing. Counsel, your pleasure. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a resolution approving the budget of the school board of the city of Danville for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. First reading.
Okay, there a second? Uh, Mr. Gilstrout. Okay, um, discussion of the motion? First reading. Confederation of adopting an ordinance to increase various fees. I open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Increasing various fees. Okay, close the public hearing. Counsel, your pleasure. Uh, Mr. Rowley.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance limiting establishing certain fees and charges for finance and, am I on the right one?
Mm-hmm.
I think.
Yeah, you got it.
Uh, for, for charge for finance and airport effect with July one, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, there a second? Mr. Campbell. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Bogler?
Yes, uh, and it doesn't directly relate to, to this particular fee that we're discussing, but the issue of fees in general, um, I know that several council members have discussed this in, in previous meetings about the, what fees council has authority over, which ones we don't, which ones that we would like to, which ones we wouldn't. And so I would just like to take this time while we have a chance and while other council members will have the ability to speak afterwards, um, to formally request that we put on a work session as soon as possible. I know it can't be done tonight because we'll have to get the information together, but hopefully at the, at the very next work session. The issue of fees and, and the information for council and, and to find out which ones that, you know, we can put under council's ability to, to adjust or eliminate if we want to. I know there's been a lot of discussion about getting rid of that fifty-dollar library fee for non-city residents. And so I'd just like to ask, uh, at this time, that, that we have that put on a work session, please. Thank you, Mayor.
Further discussion? Uh, Mr. Gilstrout.
I would like to echo what Councilman Bogler has indicated, that we need to have a discussion separate, on fees only, most, uh, more specifically of what fees council has authority to set and what fees they do not. It's my understanding that council sets all fees now except recreation fees. And I think we need to have that discussion to, uh, see if, uh, we want to bring that under council's also. But anyway, I support, uh, Mr. Bogler on his, uh, request, and I hope we'll get it on a work session relatively quickly.
Okay, Mr. Jones.
I agree one hundred percent with Mr. Mayor. And also in that work session, I agree with both Councilman Bogler and Gilstrout, can we get copies of what the fees are, so we can all look at those fees? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can I get a further discussion? Uh, Mr. Shanks?
Yes, I just wanted to, for the benefit of the public, point out, these fees are fees that apply to real estate land books and, which are very expensive to maintain and copy for the public, not for the public, actually. It's available for the public free of charge on the website, the city's website. Uh, what the fee is involved with is the cost of reproducing that for someone that is not normally just a general public person, but a business or institution, uh, to provide copies. So these fees are fees to collect charges that the taxpayers would be incurring, uh, if we didn't, they'd be unfairly incurring those costs. Likewise, to, the fees on the airport are reflective of the cost of the meeting rooms to maintain. So these are fees that are important to, to all taxpayers and that the appropriate parties are paying their fair share of that particular product. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I had a question about the airport room charge. Uh, so it's twenty-five dollars in addition to the fee to clean up the room. Now, what if the entity renting the room cleans it up? Do they still get charged the twenty-five dollars? Raise the fee to so much per hour and then two hours, two hours in blocks, two hours blocks, and then it said there's another twenty-five for cleaning up the room?
If they were fair.
If what? Well, the question is, if, if the organization cleans up the room, do they still get, they still incur the additional twenty-five dollar fee?
Um, that could be considered, it could be waived, I guess. But it's never happened. It's not, I mean, there might be somebody helping out, but we're vacuuming, we have to bring the vacuum, we have to wipe down the tables, we have to fold up the tables, put away the chairs, things like that, that they wouldn't have access to.
So the real fee is, what is, it's going up to fifty dollars an hour? What is it?
No, it's, it's going up from, uh, basically twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour to twenty-five dollars an hour for two-hour minimum, fifty dollars for two hours.
Right. Plus the twenty-five dollars more.
If you bring food. Very few organizations and groups bring food for their meetings. It's just only if they bring food.
Do they get, incur a cleanup fee?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, uh, we have a motion on the floor and a call for the vote in a few minutes. Already, I've heard, uh, five, um, comments regarding this item. So if this motion passes and if council wishes to change what we passed tonight, if we do that, we can do that without waiting a certain period of time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Further discussion? Uh, Mr. Vogler, Mr. Gilstrout?
Yeah, I did just want to, real quick, uh, I, I agree with Councilman Shanks when he says that, that some of these fees are, are there for a reason, obviously, but just to give you an example, I, I disagree with the suggestion that the fees are set in a way that they can't be any other amount of money or, or we're gonna be sticking taxpayers with an expense. Softball field rentals, for example, at Dan Daniel, that fee has been set, told to us for numerous years, is, is much higher than those surrounding us, and that's gonna be one that I wanna particularly look at. And if you look at a static model, then yes, if you lower the fee, you're gonna be lowering the revenue coming in, but I believe you're gonna see an enhanced amount of revenue because more people are gonna be renting it. We have softball tournaments in here on fairly frequent basis during the summer by doing that. And that's just one example, Mayor. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Mr. Gilstrout.
Uh, Mar, I have a question for you. Could you cite some examples of organizations that rent this room? And are there any that get it free?
The, uh, well, for example, Duke Energy is gonna be here in May. They're gonna be there for a week.
You should charge them double.
A second.
I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
But there's, um, workers' compensation, attorneys come in, those are examples in which, um, they're paying fees for use of the, the conference rooms.
Who utilizes it at no cost?
Several public organizations, uh, departments, city departments, city agencies.
Will that change?
No. This is just.
Mr. Shanks.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify. My comments were entirely on what this motion was about. My comments regarding the fees, being appropriate, were entirely what this motion was about. Somehow, we got off topic, but my comments were about the fees included in this motion.
Okay. Okay. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilstrout.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Bogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye. Declaration of adopting an ordinance to upgrade and expand hazardous materials equipment. Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance limiting the fiscal year twenty fifteen budget appropriation ordinance to provide for a grant from Virginia Department of Emergency Management in an amount of thirty thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars to upgrade, expand and sustain the equipment of the Danville Regional Hazardous Materials Fund Stephen and appropriate insane.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Buckner. Discussion of the motion? First reading. Confederation approving a resolution to terminate the other post-employment benefit trust fund agreement between the city of Danville and the, um, trust fund board trustees. Counsel, your pleasure. Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the resolution authorizing the approval and determination of City of Danville, Virginia, other post-employment benefits, trust fund and revision of all remaining assets of the city, to the city.
Okay, there a second? And Mr. Rowley. Discussion of the motion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Bogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrout.
Aye. Confederation of fiscal year twenty sixteen, fiscal year twenty seventeen, utility rate increases. I open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I remain the same person I was earlier. I, I wanna talk just for a couple of minutes about the utility rates, and I'm not complaining about the utility rates. I just want to explain to some people why they're so high. Transmission fees and congestion fees have been around for a long time. Transmission fees were first authorized by the Water Power Act of nineteen thirty. We should take those two words and kinda slam them together and call them transgression fees, because we are paying for the sins of last year's high demand. Why do we have the high demand? I can give you some examples. My wife worked in a job where she had to go to houses and deliver packages on an almost daily basis. She would go in the summertime and they would open the, the door and a blast of cold air would come out because the thermostat was set at about sixty-eight degrees. In the wintertime, she would go and a blast of hot air would come out because they had the thermostat set at eighty-five degrees or ninety degrees, and were walking around in shorts, eating ice cream to try to cool off. We are responsible for the high rates. We being the people that utilize the electric power from the city of Danville. The only way we're gonna cut those rates is to stop using so much electricity. And there are people in this room, sitting on this council, that are close to my age, and you know as well as I do, we grew up without air conditioning and without a whole lot of heat. We had a five-room house that had one coal stove. I used to have to tote the coal upstairs and we'll scuttle. When we wanted air conditioning in the summer, we opened the windows and hoped that a cool breeze would blow. We have gotten to the point in this country that we are causing our own problems and then we're complaining about them. I know of one person who lives in the county but uses Danville utility rates or Danville electricity, who has already set her thermostat, she set it the first warm day in spring, to sixty-eight degrees, and it will remain there until sometime in October when it gets cool. This is why we have high utility rates. We are the problem. As for the city of Danville and selling Danville utilities, if I walked in here tomorrow and told you, we have a new industry that's gonna hire a hundred and fifty people, give or take, that's gonna put two hundred million dollars into our economy, that's going to pay ten million dollars a year to the city of Danville in taxes, you would jump for joy. Gentlemen, that is Danville utilities. When we think of it as another business, a new plant, so to speak, we would jump for joy, and now we're yelling, sell it. Mr. King says that we'd have to have two hundred million dollars for it. If I had two hundred million dollars to buy a utility and bought Danville utilities and named it Garrison Utilities, your electric rates would not go down. More likely than not, they would go up because I still wanna make my money and I want to get my investment back, and I'm still gonna have to pay the city ten million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My emphasis this evening is on, um, electricity, and I believe that there are some other options, and I question, have we done research looking at other options? And one of the things, I was doing some research and kinda looking at some of the different things that other cities, other countries, the nations have done, and of course, it's just, the gentleman just shared, a good example is North Korea that does not have power at many hours of the day. And so, as he says, as we look back over our history in America, we know that, um, coming out of the Dark Ages, there were periods that we did not have, um, electricity, but we have moved past that and we believe that we can have comfort in our homes to a degree. However, we know that there is a need for folks to be able to reduce the use of, um, electricity, and there are systems that have used, um, load management programs that they have used, such as in Northern Virginia Electric Cooperative, um, where they have, um, connected these systems to the, um, individual's home setting and plugs ends where they are able to reduce power during certain hours of the day, and this is a load management system that is used. Northern Virginia Electric Cooperative has also been one of the most reliable corporatives, and it's financially stable and it's, um, built with a reliable system, but it is also a customer-owned system. So I was trying to look at some of the systems throughout the country and a little research to just kinda be able to come to talk tonight for a little bit, but I realized that there can be a more of a commitment to serve the community and that it can begin to happen within the whole system. And so there are some options of looking at some other forms of, um, electricity power systems, such as using more coal, gas, nuclear power, solar and other options, and we know that out in the West, we have the windmills and so forth, but we don't know how effectively that will work out here in the East. But I think that, again, there are ways that we can begin to look from within, how we can more effectively look toward changing some things as we move forward in the future. We know right now we're at a tight place in the budget and so forth moving forward, but I believe that in the future days ahead, there needs to be a lot more research and thought from, um, others that are sitting at the table. thought from others that are sitting at the table to determine what can we do differently as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Closed public hearing. Counselor's your pleasure. And Mr. Shanks?
Mr. Mayor, I move for adoption of an ordinance adjusting utility rates and charges, I'm sorry, utility rate increases. My apologies. Utility rates and charges for wastewater effective July 1, 2015, and for gas and electric effective July 1, 2016.
Okay. The second? And Mr. Rowley, discussion on the motion? Mrs. Shanks?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you know, this is a recommendation that came from the Utility Commission. And for the benefit of some of those speakers tonight and some in the public, the Utility Commission goes through a rate study for all of its utilities every two years. And the study is to determine what future costs will be so that the city can adjust their utility rates in an orderly fashion without springing an unusually large number or getting behind the curve and having to make up the losses from previous years. So the rate study this year has recommended that these utilities increase in the rates indicated and the fees indicated. They're very small, they're almost in the order of inflationary-type charges. So, and I'd also like to address, just if I may, Mayor, the study committee, the steering committee, that is comprised of some council members and some utility members, commission members, have looked at some of the great ideas that you brought forward. And if you'll look at which to come, some of the recommendations that are coming out of that committee, load management being one of them, I think you'll see that Danville Utilities is trying to be proactive and get back in front of the curve. So I appreciate the speakers, but I did want to point that out and make those comments for this motion.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay. First reading. Communication, Mr. King?
I'd like to invite the public to a big community celebration we're holding on the 1st of May, Friday. We've done a lot of work in the River District and we're launching a new brand for the River District. We hope will help us distinguish Danville more strongly in the region. It's a great place with a beautiful river and area around the river. This will be at 6:30, not 5:00. There have been some mistakes and some earlier publicity. 6:30 Friday evening, May the 1st, at the Community Market Building at the Crossing of the Dan. We're hoping the public will understand this invitation is to every citizen of Danville and we hope to see a big crowd there. There'll be, among other things, a fireworks show on par with the 4th of July fireworks show, so it should be a great event. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Locken has told me that his casual dress council members, so feel free to come in and dress comfortably. Okay. Mr. Whitfield?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mrs. Demasi?
Nothing, sir.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Yeah, I'd like to thank, I think that most of them are gone now, the Youth Council and Boy Scout Troop 300, Ms. Richardson as well, for speaking tonight. And definitely, I'm looking forward to this River District rebranding party that's happening. Like Mr. King said, it's May 1st at the Crossing of the Dan facility. And let me tell you what, if you haven't been down there, you hadn't been downtown, you hadn't been on the Riverwalk Trail in a while and seen the sculptures that are out there, they just got put out last week, you are really missing out. It's going to be a great time. It's free for all, so please, 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 come out and show your support for Danville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell?
First of all, I'd like to say all of the citizens, to go outside, to come to City Hall to express yourself. It's a blessing and a privilege that we have freedom of speech in so many countries where they do not have that. And I'm just very appreciative. Last night, I was being interviewed on Star News and I was surprised, and really not surprised, of the many calls that was called in about the water. But the most disturbing factor that got me, and I hadn't had no one talk to me about it, and I wanted to bring it on the floor tonight, and I don't know what to do about it, but so many people were complaining about getting sick, other complications, reference to breakouts, skin rashes, diarrhea, things like that. And I hadn't heard that before. I don't know what we should do or if we can do anything, or if the Health Department should be aware of it. But if there are citizens who are having problems and we're saying, "Well, you have an option to buy water, but we want them to drink our water," and I have been told that the water is safe to drink, and I have been drinking it, and I haven't had any problems. But there were quite a few calls of citizens having a problem. So I wanted to bring it on the floor. And I stated that if you're having a problem, then come to council to speak about it. But no one came tonight. But I did bring my word and my commitment that I would address that issue, that some of our citizens are having a problem, if we should be concerned or make the Health Department aware of it or just whatever. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
Just want to say to Dr. Pohamus and Mr. Ghul and Ms. Dones, thank you all so much. Ms. Dones and Mr. Ghul are no longer new school board members, and I think they're starting to find it out, but keep up the good work. Also, Mr. Mayor, I want to remind everyone again that next week, the Youth Council on Wednesday at the YMCA, invite everybody, if you get off work, please go out and support our Youth Council and the youth and what they're doing in our community. School will be getting out very soon and we pray that everything is safe with our young people. In a couple of weeks, you're going to be hearing about a college bonanza where Mr. Gilstrap and myself serve on a board and the State Department of Schools and others in cities involved in getting information out to our young people. This is going to be very huge and you'll hear more about it. My last comment is, Ms. Nelson, thank you so much and your son for being here. To see members of our community getting involved in their local government, it means so much. Thank you to everyone who was here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Thank all the people who came out tonight, the Boy Scouts. A few years back, my son and I participated in Mount Vernon Troop 300. It's a great troop. I don't think, as far as I know, to answer Reverend Campbell, if any uptick in diarrhea and skin rash cases, at least at the emergency room at the hospital, there's always some. I don't know, I'll check on that and see if it's out of the ordinary. Big festivals coming up, the Wine Fest is this weekend. You know, as the era of tobacco wanes in this area, wine is increasing. If you sail east from Virginia, you don't run into England, you run into Spain, Italy, the Mediterranean. The climate here is perfect for wine growing and wine is good for the heart. So I encourage you to come out for the Wine Festival. Also, the big festival, the May 1st Festival, this is going to be a major celebration, a new brand for the city, Make It Shine Celebration. This branding, I think, is really going to instill pride in our city. The new signage is going up. I think, you know, this is, we're going to make Danville shine and I think this is going to make Danville proud. So please come on out. And I want to make one comment on the Fire Department, I think they've left, but you know, it's wonderful they got that reward, the accreditation, they've worked very hard. But what makes me feel best about the Fire Department from their past exploits, I have no doubt that if my house was on fire or my office is on fire and my family or my employees were in danger, there's not a fireman on that force that wouldn't risk his life to come and save us. That's what makes me proud of the Danville Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowley?
Mr. Mayor, four things real quick. One, Boy Scout Troop 300, we thank them for coming tonight, the Youth Council, we thank. I'd also like to give a shout out to the Art Trail. We met the local artisans that have their pieces and I'd like to give a shout out to the, what they're called, the local jurors that picked these winners out of 51. I think we had seven out of 51 submitted. But Rick Barker, Fred Motley, Caribert, Bill Screenya, Bruce Wilson, I thank them very much for all their time and effort that they put into that. And lastly, Dr. Miller, I am doing all I can to make my heart strong.
You know, I was a tad late and missed some of the speakers earlier, but I'm sure I'll catch it on the rerun. The only thing I can think to add is it's a big weekend, the first weekend of May. Already mentioned the branding and all, and the new city branding coming out that evening, May 1st, I believe it is. But the following day, the first weekend, Saturday in May, will be the Community Market, Farmers Market opening back up. So I'm looking forward to that. The Farmers Market, this time of year, it's mostly green leaves and things, but the vegetables start running in, so probably be some free tomato plants early on, too. Anyway, they have done that in the past. I don't know if they have plans to do that. But Farmers Market will be opening that May 2nd, Saturday, the first Saturday in May. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vogler?
I too want to thank everyone who came up and spoke tonight, not just only tonight, but in previous meetings. And you come down and you let us hear the good, the bad, and the ugly. And, you know, and we appreciate all of it, we truly do. As Councilman Campbell pointed out, there's parts of the world, places Cuba and Venezuela and North Korea, where you can't voice any kind of opposition to your government if you value your life. And so I think that's one of the things that we often, we kind of forget or we take for granted in this country, that we do have that freedom and that right. And I thank Councilman Campbell for mentioning it. In a few minutes, we're going to have in our work session a discussion, a continued discussion on transitioning some of our city vehicles away from costly fossil fuels and towards other fuels that are more cost-effective and better for the environment. And this is something myself and Vice Mayor Miller and others on council have been really kind of pushing for and hoping we could find a way to do for a few years now at least. And it looks like, you know, propane may be a feasible option for our transit fleet. And I look forward to having this discussion. I'm excited about it because it's not only something that could potentially save us money, it is something that is better for the environment and it's positioning Danville for the 21st century, better use of technology and as things advance for us to get on board with it. And I'll mention real quick, and I'm going to mention it in every meeting until we get it on a work session, talking about the 21st century, this device right here, people should be able to get on a mobile website and report their power outages. Talked about Fix It Danville tonight, great app. People should be able to report their power outage the same exact way. So I'm glad that you mentioned how Fix It Danville is working for reporting other issues. And I really hope that we can get this on a work session soon. Lastly, I just want to address the water issue, and I know we're going to be going into a work session to discuss it further, so I don't want to get into specific proposals about it. But as mentioned, we all hope that the worst is behind us in terms of the taste and the smell and the DEQ has been here and everyone has been working as hard as they possibly can to identify what is causing it, you know, how do we prevent it from happening soon. I know some people have been affected more than others. But my personal belief is, is if even tomorrow, everyone's water in the entire city was back to the way it was last year and it was normal again, it doesn't change the fact that for over two months, a large portion of our population was receiving a product that they could not use and were still paying for it. That's the important thing. They're paying for a product that they cannot drink. You can drink it, it won't kill you. Drink it tonight, it will not kill you, as far as we know. But it is not pleasant, to say the least. And, you know, I know that we all hear it, not just on phone calls and emails, those of us who are on social media probably hear it even more. If we're out in a restaurant, if we're out in a store, if we're out with our family somewhere, the only thing that we've heard about for the past two and a half months is the water and stories of people. For us here on this stage, it's been an inconvenience, obviously, but we're able to live with it. We can go buy bottled water or something. Danville's poverty rate is 27%. So I ask you, think about people who are already paying for water that they usually rely on as their drinking water. And they're, you can't drink it. I mean, it has been awful, to say the least, in most places. Go to a restaurant, you know what I'm talking about. So to force them to pay for that water when they haven't really been able to drink it for, we're not talking about a week, we're not talking about two weeks, we're talking about two months and going. To me, you got to think about the people on low income. Again, I mentioned the poverty rate. You think about people, this is a substantial expense to them if they've had to go out and buy bottled water and things of that nature. I know we've all heard the stories. So I look forward to discussion. I'm not locked in on any one particular proposal about how we do it, but to me, my basic belief is that for us to force people to pay for a product that they have not been able to use or has not been up to standard, we have not delivered a quality product. Again, it was not our fault, but it is still the bottom line. Folks have not received a quality product. I don't believe that's right. So I look forward to discussion and suggestions from any council members about how we go about the mechanism of doing this. But I look forward to having the discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Saunders?
Thanks to all for coming out tonight, to our speakers and presenters, the Boy Scout Troop 300, Mount Vernon Church, and to others. We really appreciate your interest and being involved in your government. I could not agree more with what Vice Mayor said about the Fire Department, really appreciate all they do every single day, just like the Police Department. We run from the problem, they run to it. So special thanks to people who put themselves and their lives in harm's way. Just to say, we hear about the water issue every single day. I know I do. And it is frustrating to the consumer, it's frustrating to us as well. And one of the, I guess, one of the most frustrating point is, we don't know the origin. We may have theories, we have ideas, but we don't know the origin of what this problem, where it came from, and what needs to happen to fix it. People are expressing concerns and I do respect that and I do understand that. We will talk more about this in a few minutes in our work session and there are a lot of areas to be concerned about. But for me, I think the main issue is, as we look for some type of, I guess, solution or whatever, we are still in the problem. It has not been resolved yet. We do not know what the outcome will be. We do not know what the cost factor will be. There are many, many unanswered questions, so I think we need to consider everything we possibly can as we try to arrive at some type of conclusion. And I certainly hope that it can be done very, very quickly. I wasn't going to say this, but I'll say it just to make the point. While we get complaints all the time, today at lunchtime, I was talking to someone in the City of Danville and this person said to me, they live in Halifax County, and they were looking to move to Danville, to buy a home here in Danville. And some people told them, "You might want to wait. Don't buy your home in Danville yet." Okay? And this person said to me that he and his wife decided to wait. That's just one example of how all of this is hurting our city. So, and I know, I have every confidence in our staff that they are doing all they can to resolve this problem. I was at the water treatment plant today, talking to staff, sampling water, and I still drink the tap water. And I'm glad that Councilman Campbell shared the concern that some people were calling in last night. So I'm just simply saying to you that we hear you, we understand, you're frustrated, we are too. As I did at the last meeting, I apologize, it's not our fault, but I do apologize for our city because you elected us to answer your question, to keep you safe. And I just remind you that when the Department of Environmental Quality was here in Danville, I asked them specifically, "Did the problem start in Danville or did the problem come to Danville?" And the answer was, "The problem did not start in Danville. It came to Danville." So just know that we're still trying. And I'm sorry we don't have an answer, but to make up an answer just to satisfy some people would be untrue. And every once in a while, it's refreshing when I hear people say to me, "I don't have any water problem. My water doesn't have any odor to it." Okay? My water doesn't have any aftertaste. That's refreshing. But the great majority are saying, yeah, they have that issue. And quite frankly, at our home, we have it too, that issue. So we're trying, we're working hard. Thank you very much. Me in the journal.